Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:02 PM on Thursday, October 14th, 2021. Roll call.
Jason Daly.
Jason did get a hold of City Hall. He had to work tonight.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Don Rogers here. Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Love-Lady.
She also got a hold of City Hall today. She is ill.
And Mayor Shuck.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Parsons, will you do honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Mayor's report. Parks Board event. They had their McMurphy Chips for Trails event last weekend. It was a success. I'm not sure how many loads of chips equivalent they got out of it, but they took care of all the trails on the east side of the park. So that was a great event. We have people from Riderwood. I think Napvile came down. Lots of people brought their limbs. So it was a great, great event. A reminder that the railroad crossing here in Vader is going to be closed for three days next week, from the 18th to the 20th. So plan accordingly. Ananen Road ownership update. So over the years that I've been involved, there's been a lot of talk about who owns the, who owns Ananen Road, that section right there. Because if you look at the maps, it's pretty clear that Ananen Road is within BNSF right of way. Pretty much all the way up and, all the way to the side up until, up to Little Crane's drive-through window. It's just all the way up to the building. And we've talked to BNSF before about it, and they've said, if you want us to fix it, we'll just close the road. And we have a document from 1954 that says Louis County owns the road. The BNSF gave them a grantee ownership of it. And so it would appear that it is county's responsibility to fix it. And over the years, people have looked into it. Mr. Wilson would sit up here and bang the table and said, the city will not spend its money on, on that road. So I've tasked the attorney with trying to figure out exactly what's going on with it. With that 1954 agreement, there is an attachment. There's a map that is supposed to be attached to that that shows that exactly what county is supposed to own. And so we've got a public records request in with the county to try to get a hold of that map. And once we have that, it'll be county's burden to prove with a more recent document than that, that it is not their road to own. So that's the update on that. So the good news is, right now, county seems to think that we could use our STP, our state pass-through funds. If we asked county to fix the road utilizing those funds, since they are held in trust for us by the county, county would take, would fix the road for us. So that's what they have said so far. So the good news is, despite whatever happens at the end of, at the end of this investigation, we do have a way to initiate fixing of that road. So that's the good news. More to come. Item number four, Warden Park Playground. So we're still waiting for the state review of the revised cultural resources survey. DAHP has reviewed the document, and we're just waiting on the tribes to do their portion of it. Apparently, the Native American tribes need to buy off on whether or not we build a playground next to the jail. So that is that. And number five, Louis County ARPA Funds Coordination. So tomorrow morning, we have a meeting with Commissioner Pollak and some other individuals that are tasked with coordinating ARPA funds, which are the COVID relief funds. And so we're going to figure out exactly what the county has to offer as far as helping to boost our purchasing power with those funds. And then, of course, Commissioner Gary Stamper did pass away since our last meeting. And there's a public memorial on October 28th at 1 o'clock at the Southwest Washington Fairgrounds. So folks are invited to that. Council reports. Any council members have reports?
I don't.
All right, hearing none. Agenda approval. We do have two changes. First, the voucher amount needs to be one penny less than what is listed on your agenda. It was a typo. It shouldn't be one cent. It should be zero. So sixty cents, not sixty-one cents. And the other change, city business item number three. Council to consider Rogland's application for payment number four. We would need to add that as well.
I don't, I don't have two on here.
Right, we need to add item number three.
Is Roslin?
Council to consider Rogland's application for payment number four. And you do have that document in your packet. Mr. Hall actually has it there in front of him. It looks like this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for October 14th, 2021, with the addition of the Roslin payment and the voucher number being zero. No, not zero, but sixty instead of sixty-one.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with the changes listed. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by?
What's her face?
Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Make a motion that we approve city council meeting minutes for September 23rd, 2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2021. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion for the approval of first vouchers for the first half of October 2021 at $68,358.60.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Louis County Sheriff's Department Monthly Report from Mr. Fraz.
Good evening. For the month of September, the Louis County Sheriff's Office of Law Enforcement calls for the city of Vader. During September, there were total of 344 citizen contacts. There were 11 traffic stops where two infractions were written. Two criminal citations were written. In addition to that, there were a total of 22 calls for service, 16 of which happened when someone was not dedicated to the city of Vader, and the other six when someone was. During one of those dedicated shifts, there was also a criminal arrest for a DUI involving a traffic collision. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks. And continued law enforcement update from Sheriff Rob Schnauser.
Well, good evening, Commissioner or council members. It's good to see everybody. It's been met. I wanted to address a couple of things. I think before you have proposal for 2022, 2023 budget proposal in the amount of $92,347. As you know, that is a 6% increase over the 2021 contract. I do have numbers laid out for you. I know there's been some questions about what it would cost to have your own police department. I wanted to break down a couple of that, if you would like to know that. So right now, to hire a brand-new officer, right now, right, just fresh off the street, costs the Louis County Sheriff's Office $208,000 the first year. Every year after that is about $127,000, almost $128,000. If we were to hire somebody that has experience, we call them a lateral, right? Because they've already been in the academy. But we're looking at, at that, for that individual, just to get them started out, it's at $225,000, just shy of $225,000. Go ahead.
Is that just wages?
No, that is.
What does that include?
That is a vehicle, radio, pre-employment costs, cellular, computers. That does not even include, at this time, body cams. And as you guys know, effective January 1st, 2022, you will be expected as law enforcement to have cameras, body cams specifically relating to juvenile contacts. But they are asking that you have at least some type of recording device and a recordation device if you're interviewing suspects of potential crimes, whether it would be here in facility or in a vehicle. So that way, the Louis County Sheriff's Office has purchased body cameras for every single deputy from my level all the way down to the newest deputy. And then we have purchased 24 in-car camera systems. So the cost around that is about just shy of $400,000. That does not count the employee that we'll be hiring just to do all the public disclosure requests, the redactions for attorneys. So for instance.
Just with the video public record request.
So for instance, going into 2022, this vehicle accident with the DUI that was involved, that would be on recordation device. It would be video, audio. That would be submitted for evidence as well. So going into 2022, there's a lot more that we're going to be doing. The 6% over two years is, is really just kind of, I wouldn't even say inflation, because I think inflation is going to be a little bit higher than 3% in here. I think we're living at over 5.7%. But that doesn't count, you know, we didn't include wages that we're giving patrol deputies or costs that we're having at the jail. As Sergeant Fraz said, you had 22 calls for service. If you figure out how much each one of those costs and then the amount of time spent on each of those, I assure you, as you tell your citizens, that you are getting your money's worth because you could not afford one police officer in this city at this point in time. And I would encourage you to really think hard. I understand the city's growing. I understand that there's a lot of need to have that. And also a need to have extra coverage. I cannot offer extra coverage at this time. 20 hours is what we can give you. If I could give you more, I would. Here's the unfortunate piece. We have a city in Louis County called the city of PL, which currently has no law enforcement. Thus, we are required by state to cover all calls for service out there. So it really diverts a lot of resources that we have that we could put in for some extra hours here. Now we're dividing resources up there without a contract or anything going on with them. And they've been without a law enforcement officer for well over a year now. So we are down officers. We are faced with some new laws that are challenging. And I know I've talked to you, Mayor, and a couple others about the 6% increase over the next two years. I, I know that sounds like a lot of money, but at the end of the day, you are getting your jail fees paid for as well as your services. And when you look at your jail fees, Gabe, I don't know, was that individual suspended?
There was two criminal citations for suspension, but one was a DUI. I mean, not maybe one.
So, so you're looking at if, if this individual, which was in a collision DUI, that by itself is, could be up to a year in jail. That would break the city right now. You guys couldn't afford it. It would cost way more than $92,000. I almost guarantee you that. I, I understand that it is money that's coming out of your city and it goes to us. And we have these discussions every year. But I really do think that you are getting the best professional service. You don't have to see me all the time. You can see Sergeant Fraz here more often than not. But I, I do think that with the hours that we give you, 20 hours plus our response time, as you know, 16 of those were not even on call while we were here. So that tells you, you know, we're, we're down here more often than not in this area. So I'm willing to entertain any questions anybody might have regarding this. Go ahead.
Will you come down here when you're not on your 20-hour thing? Do we get charged for that?
No.
Is there?
No, it's just a flat rate. Basically, the $92,000 is a flat rate. So we put in the 20 hours, right? But there, we do come here periodically.
When you're caught otherwise, yeah.
Other than the hours we give, when we come down, you're not charged. It's the flat rate. And the thing about it is, you're being charged a flat rate. So you don't have to worry about jail fees. Every small agency, their biggest fear is jail fees. And the reason I tell you that is because there's certain mandatory minimums, right? For suspended second or DUI. If this individual's a DUI suspended, that's mandatory jail time. You can't get out of that. There's a lot of things that used to be, a smaller city could negotiate with, would they work with the courts? Where they could do home monitoring? Or they could, you know, suspend some, some jail time and do fees and all this other stuff. Those aren't what's going on anymore. And so jail, jail fees continue to go up, as you know. I know that we have a particular residence in here that takes up a lot of our time or a particular street. And we do a lot of work there, whether it's dealing with mental health, whether it's dealing with, you know, the disputes or however you name it. We have the resources available. Right now, the city of Vader would not be able to provide that on your own. Even if you had your own officer, you couldn't do it. We have had conversations where maybe another city would, would entertain a contract. That city would not be able to do the jail. So you'd have to take the jail out of it. It would sound like a sweet deal. I bet they could cut it down about 20%. If you looked at it overall, maybe they charge you about $70,000. But at the end of the day, is, those jail fees could cost you. So you're still looking at jail fees. Now, you could have a couple of good years where you sweat your eyebrows and wipe them off and say, well, we got through this. But there will come a time where it will cost you.
So jail is coming up on $100 a night, is that what?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
Yeah, and it's, I think it's going to be raised next year. So we're going to raise it, I believe, 5% more.
And that's not even the natural cost. The actual cost is.
It's almost $100, if not over $100. And the way we try to work it out is to make it the best available for, for our agencies, surrounding agencies. But it's very challenging. And we started off really soft in the early 2000s. Basically, when we first started the contract, your jail fees at that time were just below $50. You were looking at $48, $49. And it was still costing us $93 a day per inmate. And so since I've been sheriff, we've had to increase those rates because you can't just keep giving it away for free. It does cost money. And the resources that we provide in our facilities, bar none. You know, you're talking about whether it's mental health, medical, all the resources available. If someone here was to have some mental health issues, they got arrested for something, we would be able to get them those resources they needed. And if they needed a place to stay or whatever we could do, we will, we have individuals at our facility that will help guide them to success. I know there's a lot, I mean, it's very little short time that I'm explaining this, but it goes in very deep into detail on how much the cost is per deputy and the response, and you can include corrections and everything else.
In the meet-the-candidate meeting last night, somebody asked, what about the revenue from citations and tickets? What do you, I know I'm putting you right on the spot. Do you know what that number?
I don't know what the revenues are because what happens is, I know that Prosecutor Meyer, I believe he runs district court for you folks. So I don't know what the real revenue is. Generally, what it was is, you know, everybody used to think you made a ton of money off the tickets. You really don't. I think, Diane, you've been in here a long time. Even when you guys were receiving those, it wasn't that the amount. I mean, you, you have to consider it as revenue neutral almost because like, I think like Gabe said, we wrote four citations? Was it 11 or four? I think it was four.
A total of, well, between infractions and criminal citations, a total of four.
Yeah, so four. I mean, you're.
Not counting the DUI.
Yeah, not counting the DUI. You know, whatever funds you're going to give back is insignificant. I mean, you might be able to, you know, use it to buy a couple of.
Because out of those funds, they have to pay the attorneys and, yes.
And so, and so just so we're clear with the new.
And the court time.
Right. So with the new laws, they've really switched it to where if you're indigent and stuff, you're, you're not going to pay those things. And even with the new laws that's even go forward, if they get a speeding ticket, they don't have to pay it if they choose not to. It doesn't go to collections. There's nothing going to happen because of the new certain laws that are out there in place. It's just the good citizen that pays the fines.
Geez, what is the point?
I, I. Socially.
It's not his law, Diane.
Well, hey, listen, I'm a work in progress, I'm a, I mean, a council member. But there is a lot of frustration. But understand this too, the training that would cost. I mean, I'm telling you right now, if you hired an officer, even a retired officer, right now, today, you will, it'll cost you with wages and benefits, probably around $85,000. That doesn't count.
Just the officer.
That's just the officer. Because you still have to pay the benefits, right? And then you're going to have to decide. So even if you say, well, let's pay them $5,000 a month. So you're looking at $60,000 a year. And then you're talking about putting on the benefits, you're looking at between $35,000 and $48,000. So there's your math right there. I think I even skimmed a little bit when I said 85. Because the city of PL was looking for somebody, they were going to pay about $85,000 that would include wages and benefits. But then you're not including your vehicle. You're not including the cost of the equipment. And when you start adding that up, it goes over $92,000 and you earn some odd dollars.
And then you have to increase in your city's insurance as well.
So, I mean, the, the way, the norm, the way it's going, this is going to be the new norm is contracting. Now, whether you decide to contract with Sheriff's Office or you decide to contract with another agency, that will be up to the city. And I had talked to Toledo prior to Chief Brock Mueller leaving. I know they had entertained that and they wanted to talk to the city. But Chief Brock Mueller has moved on to the city of Napa Line. And so now you have a new chief in Toledo. And I, I would encourage that before you make those decisions, that they have the resources to cover the city just as much as we do. And if not, then you need to really consider that. Because each, I think Toledo still only has one officer now, and the city of Napa Line only has two. So they're missing one down in Toledo and they're missing two out of, out of Napa Line right now. So who's doing the coverage? We are. So we're covering Vader, Toledo, Napvile, PL. Our priority is, because we have contract, is the city of Vader, so.
So are, are you planning on hiring any new officers?
So it's interesting you ask that question. We have made a request. We meet with the Board of County Commissioners on Monday. We have a request for two additional deputies. That is, that is not even to get even. That won't even help us cover PL still. The, the one thing that we'll do is we'll try to get our patrol division filled up. We'll still be short on detectives and some others. But our, our primary focus is on patrol division. Not still trying to find people, you know. Of course, this is an overtime detail when they come down here. It's four to six hours per shift, I believe, up to eight at some points. But those are just random when we try to get people to come down here. So the sergeants also knows if the, the shift is not filled, somebody will be assigned. You will have coverage down here. It's, it's our obligation. When we've done the contract, Vader has always come priority because of the contract and, and what we honor on that. Because we've committed to the city of Vader and we will stay with that.
How many officers did you lose when the new, these new rules came out?
We lost two right off the bat and we may, we may lose two more. We've, we've heard some growls that some others are looking at going elsewhere. So it is a challenge. Today, we found out that the State Patrol on the Chehalis Detachment, which is, covers all of Louis County, they're going to lose five. If you talk about five, that is one, one squad. Two on the west end and three up east. So you will not have an east end detachment. There's only a couple other. They had a total of five up there. So if you lose three, you're, you're really short-handed. So we're going to see some, we're going to see some tight times and some challenging times. So it is, it's always a struggle with us.
Does the Sheriff's Department in the county, do they, do you guys do code enforcement?
We have code enforcement. We have Louis County code enforcement. We do have Smokey Pageant, who is a code enforcement officer. He's assigned to the Sheriff's Office. Basically, he works seven to five or seven to four shift, five days a week. And he'll take all animal complaints that we have. As far as the code, we talked about Hulk vehicles and stuff. He'll do some of that. And then we also call in code enforcement under Bill Tysel for that. And he will do some of those stuff. So we will do some things itself, the Sheriff's Office will if it comes to abandoned vehicles and such. But other than that, we try to put it all on code enforcement. Because what we did is we entered into agreeing with the county commissioners. They gave us a code enforcement officer, which is Smokey Pageant, to do all the animal complaints. Because what we found is, is if on an average day, you're probably receiving five to six animal complaints, if not more, well, a deputy's time is very expensive. And now you're having them go to non-criminal issues to deal with when they, when we're already short-handed. So to give you an example, in 1990, the Louis County Sheriff's Office had 42 deputies. That included the sheriff all the way down, okay? Forty-two. In 1996, the Sheriff's Office had 48 to go with the population. In 2007, we lost five positions. And, and the year before, we were given three additional, three to four. We lost that because it was a total of eight. Either way, we were, we had four or we're somehow mixed out. It averaged out to eight. Sorry, the first number was nine. But we lost eight on the, on the patrol side. So right now, in 2021, we only, currently have 37. And we're down two, so that's 39. So here we are, we're down nine, nine deputies performing more today than we did in 1996. So that just gives you, and, and we're also, if, back in 1996, the city of Vader had at least two police officers. City of Napa Line had three or four. Toledo had at least two or two to three. So you're seeing a trend where we're losing all these people, but the expectation continues to grow, especially with the new laws coming out and all more complicated cases specifically related to these new laws. More time is spent dealing with issues. And we never had the issues in 1996 that we do today, particularly relating to mental health issues, which has been a huge impact on the patrol division. So you take that away, you know, we, we've even diverted from our drug unit and put them on the road simply because of manpower issues and the expectations that we have on ourselves to continue to provide the best service we can. So that's an ever-challenging. We challenge ourselves all the time on what we can do better each and every day. And that is a, it's a struggle. And to ask two, so I can get up to, to 41, when we had 48 in 1996. And remember, the population, we did the census, and I think the official number is just shy of 83,000 people in the county when it was down to 75,000 was the previous census. So you see the increase there and then you see what's going on. You're, right now, your deputy per capita is down. Washington State is 51 out of 51 in the nation when you include Washington DC on officers per capita. So you see, we're already facing that up here, a challenge. And even here, right now, we're still facing challenges because at 30, we've, we've been at 37 since I did shifts. Well, we've been at 37 since 2008. So that tells you the challenges we're facing.
Is, is that because of budgeting? You don't have the money or just because?
It is because of, well, it's because of budgeting and it's because of priorities. I mean, if someone's not setting the priorities, because as the numbers I've given you, it is expensive to bring on law enforcement. You have to ask yourself. So if, if you're looking at whether you want to put other employees on there in the county or spending this kind of money, is, is a huge impact. And right now, we're asking, I think we're asking the county to shy of $550,000 this next year, an increase. To me, that's not a lot when you're looking at everything that we're, we're asking for and that most of it's already been taken care of. Some by ARPA funds and, and some by, we know that there's other relevant. The county's growing. There's been a lot of building, a lot of growth in Louis County overall, even down in Vader and in the city limits of Vader. The surrounding areas, as you see, we got a brand-new store coming that came in. We've got other growth that's continuing to come in, yet we're still below 1990 staffing, if you think about it. 1990 had 42, we have 30, 39. But that's, that's ridiculous. So it is too bad and, and we're, we're facing those challenges all day. But we've, we've got great folks out there, so. Any questions? I don't mean to be doing little more. I don't mean to be doing little work. I think we're doing a pretty good job, so... Any questions of you folks out there? Frustrated? Want your own police department? Be nice.
Well, people who want...
It'll cost you about, police department right now would probably cost you just shy of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start.
Yeah, we don't...
And the ongoing costs, your, ongoing costs, startup fees probably about two fifty. Uh, ongoing costs would probably be around one twenty-five. One twenty-five to about one fifty.
For a single officer?
First, for one officer.
Yeah.
And how, your officers, when they are, if it's one officer and you've got all the training, how many hours a week are they actually patrolling?
Well, that's a, you know, we have training every other week. So you're talking, we do ten hours of training, well, it was, it's six to ten hours of training every other week generally, um, that we have. We do, um, we have two teams, green and gold, right? So every other week, one team will be trained. So we're continuing with the ongoing training, and then, um, that includes, you have to have twenty-four hours of training a year, okay? But we continue to train. We do more training just because of the ongoing laws that have affected us, all the nuances of what's going on. So if you look at green and gold, you're doing two trainings a month for each team. So you're talking ten hours. So it's a hundred and twenty hours a year that we, they get trained. So if you were to look at your officer, let's say your officer gets forty hours of training, so that's one week. He gets, uh, he or she gets three to four weeks vacation, and then they get three or four weeks of sick time. So you do the math, and then the times that they're gonna be at a conference, or they're gonna be out of the area, or they're gonna be on call at home because they got called out of something. So you're really looking at how much time would an officer actually be on duty here? And you probably averages out to about twenty-seven, thirty-two hours, because if you look at it overall, that's what you probably get.
And during those twenty-seven, thirty-two hours, he's still probably sitting in his car doing some paperwork...
Absolutely.
To get by.
Right, right, right.
I don't see how it would be feasible anyway, but there, uh, apparently there's a lot more crime going on now.
No, there's, well, there's, well, Washington State's in the top ten for, for crimes, uh, in the United States, top ten. Lewis County's been impacted hugely by property crimes, and with the new laws that have gone into effect, it's really affected how we do business too. And so with all these nuances, there's very many challenges. Here's where your issue's gonna be, is finding that right individual, that right fit, right? Because you're gonna want someone that's gonna be around, but see, they're not around twenty-four, seven, because when they are, they're gonna charge you for it. That's the big, you, you used to be able to get away with that, and I, and I can tell you firsthand, I worked in a small agency, that was just the expectations. You now have to pay them when on call. You have to pay them when they come out. You have to do that. You can't say, hey, cause they may say, I, that's not what I want. I want full meal day. And you're gonna have to pay them. And that's why I'm looking at your numbers. You're gonna have some overtime. You gotta figure, you know, at least five, five hours a month overtime on top of that. You're not even getting into your MDC costs, you're not getting into your equipment costs, you're not getting into, um, the annual, some of the annual training you're talking about, which we would, we'd host for free for them whenever they needed, but the, the cost is significant.
The, another question that was brought up along the same lines as what Donna was talking about, is we're told that the crime in Vader is getting worse and worse and worse. And since I've been here, I think I'm going on six, seven years now, to me, the town seems to get better and better. The reports that we get every month, the numbers seem to be going down, but...
I think what you're seeing is that you're seeing in certain places in the community where you tend to see us more often than not. Certain areas, um, have drawn our attention more because of the calls for service in particular addresses or wherever. The crime, crime is going up, but you know, how much is unreported crime, right? How much is not being reported as being reported? You can't replace visibility. I understand that. Visibility is huge. Just being in the area late at night or whatever, we're not always, but you don't know where we're at either, because we've adjusted our schedules to where we have more manpower today than we did a year, uh, two years ago, correct? So we have more manpower at, uh, different times than we did in the previous. So, um, and, and we look at it, but when you're talking about crime outer, outer arts, outer areas of there, we've seen an increase. We've seen a huge increase in theft of catalytic converters, um, especially off Mulford Road in that area. We've seen a break in at the, whatever that burger joint is down there, and, uh, some of the other places. And we know that there's other things going on in the outer communities here, but, uh, you know, I think our property crimes are going up for sure.
Well, the area that Mike and I live in is kinda calm. Well, they know Mike is me.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're kinda protected out there, but down in, in the downtown area...
I'm gonna take that as a compliment, man.
I'm serious, I'm serious. He's our guard dog.
Well, you're watching too. You're watching him.
Well, you know, I don't watch Mike.
One thing we've always talked about, there's no reason why you can't have neighborhood watch program.
Well, we tried that, but...
You just have to have people that wanna do it.
Well, Vader has just kinda died.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody wants to be involved anymore. You can't get the community together to do anything, and there was one group that was gonna do it, and then, of course, they have to talk about their guns and stuff like that, and so it scared people, you know, and...
Yeah, well, I can't control that part.
Yeah.
But, you know, neighborhood watch programs have been successful in other areas, just to be clear. Um, cause, you know, law enforcement can't do it by themselves. It, it takes the community and, and to get involved, and I know it, it's tough. Finding volunteers these days is challenging wherever you go. Um, so particularly neighborhood watch programs or anything else, we have a volunteer program ourselves, and it's very limited on what we have anymore. So, um, those are challenges that every small city is facing. But, um, the community's growing here. I mean, there's a lot of people moving in. They're finding that Vader is a great community. It's short, short off the I-5 corridor, it's easy access north and south. Um, property is still fairly reasonable down here, and, you know, as they come down here, they fit, they find that they love the, the small-town atmosphere. So I think you'll continue to see some growth down here. It's just, it just takes a little bit. That's my optimistic view of this. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You have a question, sir? You came in, so give it to me.
No, I, I was just gonna say, uh, you're right about, you never know when to expect these guys. I was coming home from work Sunday night, it was after Monday morning, two in the morning, coming down the hill, and there, there a guy was, his light's off, waiting for someone. He got in a pickup truck, one of you guys.
Well, we knew you were coming through at that time.
I, I knew to slow down.
I thought, I think Mike called that one in.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
I, I said, I never saw him till I hit the bottom of the hill. He was in a little spot.
Is there, is there another number, um, that was the other thing a lady said at that meeting last night, that I don't feel like I should call nine-one-one, but people can call nine-one-one and just immediately tell them that it's not an emergency.
And here, here's the thing is, I could tell you the number, but it wouldn't matter because it goes into the same line, especially after hours. If you're calling during business hours, there's a different number, but if you're gonna want law enforcement, I, I tell people, don't worry about calling nine-one-one. That's what they're there for. They have specific call takers. They're not dispatchers, they're call takers. They generally have two of them on duty, especially when they're in training. They'll take the calls and then they'll route it through to a dispatcher. So they're gonna answer the nine-one, whether it's nine-one-one or it's a business line group, they're still gonna answer it. But I can give it to you if you want. If it makes you happy, I will give you that number.
You'll remember it anyway.
We have that.
I won't remember. I call nine-one-one.
That's seven four zero one one zero five. So, all right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Moving on to city business, item number one, council to consider resolution eighteen dash twenty-twenty-one BNSF sewer pipeline licensing agreement. Diane, would you like to explain this one to the council? I know before the meeting, Donna was wondering, haven't we done a couple of these already?
We have done an exact agreement like this for the water line to sewer plant. It crosses BNSF property, and this will be for the sewer line that will go that way and also on their property.
So it is a little...
It's a twenty-five year agreement. Once it's set, I'm saying that out loud, but I believe that's correct.
Yes, it was twenty-five years.
And the various fees and whatnot related to it are grant funded, correct?
Yes.
No?
Well, possibly yes.
They will. We're gonna try.
Yes. We've already paid for it in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, no, it's, it's...
Yeah, I remember that, but now are we gonna have to pay another fee, or does that cover the sewer line too?
Should be grant funded.
We paid two for two different contracts. The one that we did before was for the water line, this one is for the sewer line. Both of them cost around five thousand dollars each.
Okay, but those were already paid for. We've already paid for those. Okay, so we don't owe anymore, or it's just, okay?
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution, resolution eighteen dash twenty-twenty-one, the BNSF nineteen sixty-one, nine eighty-three sewer pipeline license agreement.
Got a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution eighteen dash twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Mr. Hall. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number two, council to consider resolution nineteen dash twenty-twenty-one, Lewis County EDC update to Vader urban design standards. Uh, as you know, Vader received a twenty thousand dollar grant to update our urban design standards. Um, the way this is gonna work is that the Lewis County EDC is going to hire the consultant that will work with Vader to make those changes, and then the EDC will pay the consultant. And so this is a contract between Vader and the EDC to make that happen.
I'll make motions to approve the resolution nineteen dash two zero two line, LC EDC update to Vader urban design standard.
Got a motion by Mr. Hall to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a second?
A second.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then lastly, the updated agenda, item number three, council to consider Rogland's application for payment number four. Uh, once again, as you know, the wastewater treatment plant is being built by Rogland's Corporation, and this is their application for payment number four. Uh, it's in the amount of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Um, Ecology has already approved it, correct, and the money's on the way. Um, Civil West, our engineering firm, reviewed it, and they do confirm that all the work, um, that they're requesting payment for has been done.
And that net change has already been previously done, with the, the change order.
Right, that's in the additions.
Yeah, we've already discussed that, right.
Yeah, that was for the, uh, uh, additional biosolids that had to be dredged out of the...
I just wanna make sure that, that's real money.
I know that you're due it, but you have not officially passed it as far as the pain.
Okay. So this, this will pass.
This will cover what they're billing us, and then we will do separate, um, legislation for the change order itself.
I see.
So how does it need to read?
Approve the amount or make a motion to approve the amount?
The application for payment number four.
So make a motion to approve the contract for the application for payment number four in the amount of five hundred and ninety-two thousand, four forty-two, eighty-two.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve Rogland's application payment number four in the amount stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? No public comment. Elected official comment? No elected official comment. This meeting is adjourned at six fifty-six PM. Thank you, everybody.